Okay, let's go ahead and call the meeting to order at eight oh one. Do we have any public comment? Anybody waiting in the wings there? Bill?
Uh, it does not appear that there are any members of the public.
Okay. Um. Let's, oh, hi Jeff.
Good morning.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
I am good. All right, uh, so let's go ahead and look at the minutes from just January meeting. I need, I need a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you Vince, second. Amanda, did you get, did you get sworn in?
I did.
Oh, good, okay. Hi Mike. Hey Mike, how are you?
Morning.
Good. Okay, so you can second. All right, Amanda second. Uh. Any comment? The tricky part here is you technically can't vote on these Amanda because you weren't, you'd have abstained, so let's vote. Uh, all those in favor? I, all those opposed, non abstain, that's you Amanda.
Abstain.
Okay. All right, so I am very happy to introduce Amanda Went as our new commissioner. Yay. Um, so why don't we go around and just introduce ourselves? I'll do Amanda last so she can, you know, give us a little bit more information about her, her background. Um, so if you could, I'll call you out who you are, why you're, why you're here. Um, okay, so I'm Kate Donahue, Chairman of the Committee, uh, like Vince, I've been on since day one and even before that. So I spent twenty years in the cable television industry, which is what made me decide to take this on even. It's not really like that anymore. Um, and I love working with this group. So Vince, you're up next.
Okay, well, I, I, as Kate mentioned, I've been on the, uh, Commission slash Committee since, uh, inception. Uh, I'm a CPA and a partner with Whittlesey, um, and I'm the, I guess the resident, uh, election voltabulator.
Jeff.
Uh, Jeff Van Steenberg, Technology Manager for the Trumbull Board of Ed.
Mike. I'm mute, they are.
Good morning, Miss Went. Uh, C, uh, Mike Hogg at Seashouse Principal and they, the Went family is a proud Seashouse family, so they, they know Trumbull High School.
Uh, hey, Bill Jens is saying he doesn't have the link. Can you resend please?
I just did.
Thank you. And Bill?
Good morning, uh, Bill Chin, I'm the IT Director for the Town of Trumbull, so I help out with, um, kind of the procurement and installation and maintenance of some of this stuff and happy to be here.
Thank you. Okay, Amanda, tell us who you are.
So, uh, I'm Amanda Went. I began my career as a video and staging producer, um, for corporations. Um, and I transitioned into, uh, website design, development, email marketing. And I've really been focused on digital marketing, social media over the last ten years, I'd say. Um, I was also, uh, the founder of the Yukon Television Station. Um, they did not have one for students and so I kind of am very excited to be involved with CCTV because I feel like it's a, um, full circle, full circle for me. So I'm excited to work with all of you and, uh, yeah.
I love that. Oh my gosh, that's so cool. Okay, we, we're gonna, we're gonna use you in lots of interesting ways. All right, so we've got one down and we still need another commissioner. So if you guys can keep your eyes open for, uh, somebody that would fit the bill, that's, I mean, your pedigree Amanda is like literally perfect, right? For what we need, us, you know, a small organization, but that has, I think, a, a potential and actually, we have a lot of impact across multiple platforms. So that's what we're trying to do is keep up with the technology, but also get the word out to more people that were there and that we have interesting, um, programming that citizens of the town would appreciate. So, um, let me know if you guys have any ideas and we'll get, you know, I'll talk to them and we'll get them through the process, which I think was pretty easy Amanda, right?
Yeah, definitely.
Okay, good. All right, videographer status.
Yeah, that was, um, an unfortunate case of easy come, easy go. Jens had referred to us, uh, a young woman Johanna, uh, who was really excited to get started and seemed very a great fit. And then she got a full-time opportunity in Florida before she was even able to start. So we're unfortunately back to where we started. So, um, I'm going to, you know, well, it's not going to help daytime availability, but the, you know, the AV club kids are there. But if anybody knows Amanda, if you know anybody who's available during the day, college students, um, that would be great. Because we have a lot of stuff, like I said, mostly it's the Senior Center. It's not all the time, but there are opportunities during the day just to earn some extra money.
Yeah, there's a pretty pro, steady flow of opportunities for us to film during the day that, um, we, you know, with popular programming and we want to be able to cover. So the guy that's, that did it forever, um, recently passed and, and, you know, we, we're really trying to fill his shoes if possible. Okay, let's move on to the budget. Um, we are still on track on twenty-four, twenty-five. Anybody, I actually didn't update it for today, so, but if you guys want to see it, let me know and I'll, I'll send you the spreadsheet. Um, I do want to spend a minute, so any questions on that? We're just about where we should be, you know, in terms of spending for the year. Uh. Yeah, no surprises at this point. Okay, the twenty-four, five, twenty-six budget, which is called Fiscal Year Twenty-Six, just for reference. Um, had the meeting with the first selectman, oh, there's Jens, hi Jens.
Hey.
How are you?
Fine, thank you.
So you, you already know Amanda, right?
Yes, I know Amanda very well.
Okay, so we just did introduction, so we won't, we don't have to have you introduce yourself. Um, okay, joined at eight oh eight. Okay, so we're talking about, um, uh, finances. So the, the twenty-five, twenty-six budget, um, had the meeting with Vicky, um, went over everything. She was supportive. She has to make her final recommendation by the end of this week, I think, maybe, maybe Monday. Um, there's a lot of pressure on the budget. One of the challenges is that we had a, uh, an update from DNR after Donnie came in and actually looked at the system and recommended that we reorganize our priorities, um, to put the capital, the head-end server replacement in front of the other two servers or the other ser, the one server, the, um,
Studio.
Laura, yeah, the studio. So, uh, that number comes up, which, uh, I spoke to Vicky about and there's no way to increase the capital request that we put in. So, um, we're going to go into the Board of Finance meeting, um, strategically. We're kind of stuck. Wait, the Board of Finance can increase, Bill? I'm, the Town Council can only go back to?
Correct. The Board of Finance can increase, um, the Town Council can only pick either or.
One, one or the other. So, um, the, our Board of Finance, uh, slot is, uh, March eighteenth. Um, so I will be preparing a defense to increase the budget, but there's a lot of pressure on the budget this year. So, I mean, we're gonna, we're gonna make our best effort to, um, increase that. What's still, I'm going to share my screen. Well, let's see if I can do that. Our original request was twenty-two thousand, um, with the adjustments that DNR suggested, it jumps to thirty-seven. Yeah. If we take out the remote streaming equipment, which, um, is, is, we put into support like multi-camera events like graduation, um, and this, the office computer, that brings it down to twenty-nine. So strategically, we got to think through what we're going to really press for because twenty-nine is still higher than twenty-two. Um, I tried to see if there was any ARPA money left. That's all been accounted for. So there's not really, you know, that pool to tap into, which, which took care of a, a big chunk for us this year, um, in our capital request. So, uh, we'll be pressing, you know, to up, to up the spending and see what happens. So we'll have to make some decisions later on based on, on what, what we actually get. And then if we have equipment failure, that's when we'll, what, the other potential solution is to go back to the Board of Finance with an emergency request. But that is not the ideal situation because if, if either of these servers go down, we're, we're, we're in trouble in terms of being on the air. So questions about that? Okay, so, um, again, our slot with the Board of Finance is eight, is it eight or eight-thirty AM? Where's my, where's my, uh, sorry. My schedule here, it is eight-thirty AM on March eighteenth via Zoom. So if anybody wants to be on, Laura and I will be on. If anybody else wants to be on, happy to have you. Okay, next up, programming, Laura.
Programming, um, again, we're still rolling along with, you know, the same stuff. Basketball has, um, pretty much wrapped up. We, um, have been, thank you to Jens. Jens has stepped up and helped out with recording and that's been a tremendous help, um, covering a lot more events. Um, so he, he, he's been covering a lot of stuff, particularly some of the events at the Senior Center and daytime events, which we wouldn't have covered otherwise. So that's been huge help. So, um, and again, we're covering, you know, as many adult, um, education events as we can. There's a little bit of a lull until spring sports picks up at the end of March, but we have some adult ed, um, things to cover. And I was just contacted by Madison's librarian to cover their Spring Musical. So we will have some things going on with that. Um, and that's, you know, again, I've been reaching out to the different departments, but everybody's in budget mode. So I'm sure we'll be picking up with some more in-studio things, you know, as, as that process rolls along.
Hey, so Bill, what, what? Is all the budget stuff going to be, uh, Zoom?
So the, the department meetings, um, on March eighteenth and then the following week, Tuesday, uh, twenty, the twenty-fifth, those are all on Zoom. Um, so those are the initial budget requests where departments will come in and speak about the budget. Excuse me. Um, there will be a public hearing um, after that, and that will be in the Board of, uh, sorry, the Town Council Chambers, um, on Thursday, I believe, uh, the twentieth. That, let me just grab my spreadsheet here. And then there's a public, um, meeting on the twenty-second, uh, let's see, oh, sorry, the thirteenth.
So we won't need a videographer for the Zoom department meetings?
Correct, so the, yeah, March, I'm sorry, right, so March eleventh was the first, um, Town Department All-Day Zoom Tuesday meeting. And then the following is the March eighteenth. Um, so those two days are the department meetings. On Thursday, March thirteenth is a public hearing in the Council Chambers. Uh, we'll also make that available at, on Zoom at seven o'clock PM. So that's, um, the meeting right before the Board of Finance meeting. So they'll do a public hearing on the budget and then roll into the Board of Finance meeting. And then the following Saturday, March twentieth, um, is the Saturday morning public hearing for those who can't make the, the weekday. Um, in the chambers and also on Zoom.
And then when we move on to Town Council, are those going to be in, in Council Chambers as opposed to Zoom?
Um, I have not heard about the Town Council.
Okay, I'm just thinking videographer availability for those things. Okay. All right, Laura, what else?
Um, as far as programming goes, oh, there were a couple other things that I've gotten permission to record. Um, I worked with Melissa McGary from Teapot and Vin DeScala, who is in charge of Fine Arts and Wellness at Trumbull High. And Vin's brother-in-law came in, I don't remember where he works, but he came in to speak to the students about, um, creating your brand and protecting it. And it was a really great talk about, um, to students, just helping them understand what branding is and how your behavior impacts, you know, your brand as a student, as, and how it impacts Trumbull High School. And we have permission to broadcast that as well. So we're going to, um, we're going to put that on the air. And then I also worked with, uh, Melissa McGary from Teapot and Officer Wes Bartosik to do a quick, um, Narcan Training video that they're going to share in-house in the high school. But then we can also use that on the station as well because it's just a quick, um, how to use. And they have one of those, um, CPR dummies that they use to actually show you, to show you what the box looks like, what the actually actual applicator looks like, and walks you through the process of, you know, should you find somebody that you think may have overdosed? How do you help them?
So that's evergreen programming then, right?
Yes, yep.
Awesome. Okay, cool.
Yeah.
Anything else?
Um, for now, that is where we are.
Just wanted to ask you about anything else from last time. Sorry, I'm very dry. Okay, studio update.
Studio update. The studio has been updated. Everything, um, that Tim came in to do has been done and looks great. Um, Donnie said, you know, when he came in to look at it, again, he had said that he hadn't, and Jens, correct me if I'm wrong. Um, I don't think he'd been in to see the studio itself in years. Uh, but he had said that the studio, the control room in particular, looks, it's in good shape. The things he wants to change, um, are things that don't need to be done right away.
Yeah, he suggested, uh, additional lighting, for instance, that, that's, you know, that's up, up to us. It doesn't affect the, the broadcast.
And the recommendations that we are making in terms of capital expenses are because we have equipment that is no longer being supported by the manufacturer.
Correct. That's the head-end server, the VOD server, the Flex Light and Carousel, which Carousel has been rolled into the, um, programming software. Um, and he had said that, I think that that is, the hardware itself has already been upgraded twice since we initially put it in. So it's, you know, at the end of its life cycle and it's beyond support.
So even though it isn't dying yet, should something go wrong with it, there's going to be very little that they can do to support, repair, or, you know, get it back up and running. So, um.
And the bulletin board server, that Carousel server, which runs the slides in between programming, has already started acting up. I've had to restart it a couple of times to get it back online. Um, and that, like I said, that isn't even an offering anymore. So that's at the end of its life cycle.
Yes.
There's nothing, there's nothing wrong with us waiting for it to crash before we, we replace it. We just need to accept that there'll be an outage.
Right.
Um, and if we're okay with that, then, you know, we don't, we don't need to spend any money right now.
Which I don't think is what we should be advocating for. I think we should be advocating to be proactive about it. But the reality remains, we, we don't get all the money we're looking for, we, then we have to go for emergency allocation. Yep.
It, it's one of those items that, you know, it could be left off the list. I mean, if we really have to cut deep, we don't need to replace these things because they still work. But if they break, it is not worth repairing. Then we, we would have to buy something now.
Got it. Okay, so anything else on, um, technical stuff, Laura?
Sorry, um, not that I can think of off the top of my head. Again, um, you know, this, as you had mentioned with the, um, the live streaming equipment, it's the same thing. I mean, the, the Sling Studio equipment, knock wood, is still working and working well. It's just a matter of, it's equipment that's no longer sold, no longer supported. So we're flying without a net, so to speak, as far as that equipment goes. That said, it has been working, knock wood. Um, it has been working and doing what it's supposed to do. So everybody do a little rain dance that it continues doing so through graduation and through the football season.
Okay. Any, any other technical things we need to talk about? Bill, everything's good at Council Chambers?
Uh, yes, things seem to be working pretty smoothly.
Good. Okay, moving on to marketing and PR. Now that we have Amanda, um, the thinking, remember, was hopefully we could find a commissioner who, um, brought some of that expertise to the table and could help us sort of set a, a social media communication strategy. And then we have, um, uh, you know, a young person who could probably help with execution. So that wouldn't all be on Amanda's, uh, plate. So, uh, I think we're at the point where we can hopefully activate that activity and see if Amanda can, can work on some ideas and we figure out how, how we're going to make this work.
Yeah, absolutely. I, I think what I'm, what I'm interested in hearing is, um, what it is you would like to be doing on social media? What would you, do you want to see highlights of different, um, different programming, just, um, graphics to let people know? And, you know, I know we put out our list and our schedule, I've seen that. But what is it that you're trying to get out there?
I think it's just raising awareness across the board. Just that we, that we exist, that there are multiple platforms that you can reach us on. Um, and the kinds of programming that we have available. And, and, you know, there's that sort of general idea, but I also think program-specific promotion, which Laura's already doing. But, you know, do we need a, a, a a strategy around that? Laura, jump in please and tell me.
I, I actually spent some time this week, um, uh, looking for other local PEG channels, just PEG channels in general, and going to their Facebook pages to see what are you posting? And, um, some of them live stream to Facebook, some of them do the same thing. They post their programming. Um, excuse me, I, it's allergy season. Um, it, everything from, you know, it's a lot of, some of them do like Throwback Thursday where they'll show an old sports game. Um, and the other thing, some stations actually post articles about video production, but those are more public access oriented. So it kind of runs the gamut from, here's an article about how to get good audio, um, versus here's highlights of last week's basketball game. You know what I mean? It ru, it really runs the gamut. But I agree with Kate that, um, we want to drive awareness to what's happening on the station. Um, it would be nice to be able to find somebody who has the interest and the ability to kind of scrub through a game and find a really cool ten second, yeah, a highlight clip. Um.
But maybe that's, that's level two. I think maybe we start with just general awareness of how do we just reach more people to let them know where we are, how they can find us? And, I mean, we have a way of tracking who's tuning in, not on the TV channel, but on, uh, you know, the other streaming platforms. Um, we just want more people to know about us. And then maybe you can think about, all right, then, you know, we kind of get that going.
Right.
Um, what else do you think? You know, what other angles do we have that you think would be interesting to promote? So it's really like, have at it, like.
Okay.
Whatever you think. But general awareness, I think, would be among the goals.
So I know that we have Facebook. Do we have an Instagram account as well?
Yes, the Facebook, I, I've been using Buffer to post.
Yes, okay.
Free. And that also connects to our Instagram and, um, Twitter or X or whatever you want to call it page. I don't know if we want to consider, um, if we do push to additional platforms, we would either need to use something else or get a paid version of Buffer. I don't know if we consider Threads, Blue Sky, you know, there's lots of.
There's a lot of them. Yeah, I think, I think in the beginning, it's probably best to start populating what we have. And then we can figure out where it would, you know, best be to go. Um, can I have access to those pages?
Sure, I will add you to them.
Okay, great. Um, because then I can look at the analytics and insights and kind of see who is seeing it, when they're looking at it.
Right.
You know, to give us a better idea. And then Kate, you mentioned you can, you have data in terms of who's streaming. Is that through YouTube or?
Through Laura. So she can get you, uh, you know, access to the data that we have and, and hopefully Laura, uh, continued access to see, you know, if any of our, the activity that we're anticipating bumps anything.
And I know that Vicky puts out her newsletter, um, you know, where she kind of announces what's going on. Um, does she ever highlight like a link to something that, that's going to be on the channel?
That's a good question. I don't, I don't think so, but I think that's, you could reach out to her office and provide her.
Didn't we used to include a little blurb or at least the logo or something in the annual letter?
Well, that's the one that goes with, um, the state of the town thing. But I, but she's generating the newsletter on a monthly basis, right? So that's, that's a great idea. And I'm sure, you know, I mean, just reach out to Kathy and.
It's currently also included in the Senior Center newsletter every month as well.
Good.
And it would be great if we could get Dr. Semel to include it in his stuff as well.
Yeah, he sends a monthly newsletter.
So, I mean, I think Amanda, the news is like, or the bottom line is, there's lots of opportunities, you know? I think Laura's doing a, a great job, but she's really running the station. So I think whatever plan you come up with is going to be great. And
Okay.
don't feel like you have to do everything at once. You know, this can be iterative as, as we go along. And, um, like I said, I think we have some, some support for develop, developing and getting stuff out there. So you and Laura can talk about that.
Okay.
But I, but I think like, we're wide open, right?
Okay. That sounds good.
One of the things we're missing is when we're recording, specifically at the Senior Center at the library, um, there, there's no, there's no intro or outro for us. I mean, so people come up and say, who are you filming for? And I'm said, you know, Trumbull, um, uh, Community TV or Government and Education TV. But we really should have, um, we should have a, a, a picture up before and after an event to say you could watch this on this channel, have a QR code that they can just scan. And we, we don't promote ourselves when we go out, is what I mean.
That's Jens, that's actually a good idea. I have business cards that were made up a while ago. Um, God, I was like a million years ago. And it has, you know, it has this, the channel numbers and it has the website, but I think that's a great idea now. Maybe Kate, I, I, I'll look into pricing because they're not particularly expensive, but to include a QR code that brings people right to the website or even to the watch now page, I think would probably be even better.
And even if it's a postcard size.
Well, I mean, they were business card size and I just draw, I had, I would put a stack into each camera bag. So the camera people had and made them aware. So the videographers, because a lot of times they would get approached and they would give people, you know, oh, here it is. And, um, you know, they would give them the business card. So Jens, um, that's a great idea. I can give you some of the ones that we have now.
Mm-hmm.
Hold on to. So when people ask, you can, you know, they'll have the website.
Yeah, I've already made several friends at the Senior Center.
I knew you would.
So I'm the target audience, you know?
So Amanda, Laura, Jens, I mean, if you want to talk more about this amongst yourselves, feel free.
That's fine.
Um, we just, we just want to get some sort of a plan and, uh, figure out how we're going to execute so that we can continue to build on where we already are.
Sounds good.
Awesome. Very excited. Okay, Trumbull High connection. Laura, you want to jump in or?
Sure. Um, well, the kids, um, actually Monday, we, they just started recording auditions for anchors for Eagle News Network. So they are, I know, it's very, it's really exciting and it's very, it's cool because, uh, you know, they, they felt very official because I showed, um, the student who'll be the producer, I showed her, you know, like I emailed her and she's, because I said, how do you want the studio set up? Do you want me to show you how to use XYZ? So I showed her, you know, how to use the laugh mic and it's not gonna, it's not, it didn't look like what it will when they actually do the announcements, but that's okay. It's a start. Um, so we started recording, there's going to be more this afternoon and some more tomorrow. So, um, they're slowly getting off the ground, but you know, a lot of the kids who are involved are also involved in the musical, so.
So it's, um, the eagle, the, what's the news network? Okay. And like, how many people are we talking about auditioning?
Um, well, we had one on Monday and then we'll have, I think, one today and maybe three or four tomorrow.
I know the one today.
I do too. Actually, I should bring the coffee beans to get to her today.
Oh, there you go.
But, um, yeah, no, and, and I think that's fine. You know, it tells me that a lot of kids are just as happy working behind the camera, which is also important because you know, there tends to be a lot of kids who want to be in front of the, you know, it's like either one or the other, you know, we don't need 15 kids who want to be on camera and then two kids who are going to do everything else behind the scenes. So it's nice to know that there are a lot of kids who are interested in a lot, in a lot of the behind the scenes stuff. So I'm looking forward to, to that.
Awesome.
Yeah, just, just want to jump in really quick on that, you know, so we are really excited for this opportunity. Right? So we have the AV club, right? And Eagles, uh, News Network where we're getting kids from. Um, and also the digital media too is running next year as a class. So will be staged in the studio. That's, that's, they're going to be in there, they all aspect of the studio. So they'll be looking at the equipment, creating videos, you know, practicing anchorage. So that's where we're going to draw more kids to the AV club is through the class. Um, so yeah, we, I'm so excited. I mean, I taken over this position two years ago. That was my goal, right? And it's in proportion here. Um, the teacher is going to be teaching the class and the AV, um, club advisor, they're both really excited about this opportunity. They, you know, they work with Laura and she's been great to work with. Um, so we are really excited. We're going to have a lot, a lot of kids interested in this. Um, two years from now, it's going to look a totally different aspect of it, but, you know, we're definitely moving in the right direction with the club and now with the class. Um, so it's, it's a great opportunity for Trumbull High students.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Wonderful.
We should right now be thinking about how do we, how does the station promote that the high school is using the studio, right? So it's Jens coming in and film, I mean, I know there's stuff we have to work out, but ideally filming the kids in the class doing stuff that we can put on the air to say, here's, here's your studio, Trumbull. Here's how it's being used. Here's how the high school students are using it.
And it also ties in that, you know, Kate, you and I have been wanting to promote what kids are doing in the high school, you know, like we want to show them off. And that's really important too, because Mike, as you know, we, TCTV does the live election returns, um, on the municipal election years and this coming November is one. So this actually could be a really great opportunity for the kids in digital media too.
Produce a show.
Yeah.
For the whole town.
Yeah. So we can show them off and have them work with, you know, with Katie Bowles students. Um, and then also just, Mike just did, so we're on the same page. Um, Kate and I had a call with Christina Rusati, um, Nick Dodonna, Matt Braxick and I don't remember if Jeff, I think was Jeff on the call? I don't remember. I think he might've been out sick that day. But we had a call just to sort of everybody touch base and meet together just because we're all sharing resources and, and just to kind of all get on the same page, equipment wise and you know, communication. So we all know who each other is.
That's great. I'm glad that happens.
Yeah, that was, that was great. That, I mean, Kate, Mike, I can't tell you how much we appreciate. I mean, we have been trying to do this for so long and it feel, it really feels like it's coming together now. So, um, kudos to you and everybody involved that it's, it's, you know, people are really making things happen and.
I mean, when I came here and I was like, I was like, Laura, this is wasted space. We gotta, we gotta use this. And, and now the class is running next year. So we're really excited for, for what it's going to look like. So.
Awesome.
And I'll, I'll take some pictures and, um, I'll try to get some pictures and video today during the audition of, of a little bit of everything, you know?
Yeah, I'm going to think about how do we, like, how do we use this to, to just let more people know what the great things that are happening there.
Yeah, this is a great thing to, uh, to start with, you know, um, to really pull people in, especially on the, on social media. So.
Very cool. Okay. Anything else on the high school connection? All right. Any other topics that we didn't discuss that we should?
Just really quick, Kate, I have to jump off to my next meeting. So bye everyone. Thank you guys.
Bye. Thanks, Mike.
See you, Mike.
Um, I think just making a note that as Laura said, this is going to be an election year. So that is usually, you know, like our, besides graduation, our big night where we produce a, a, um, a results show. And at this point, there's not really any other place to go to get the information because we've got typically have students posted at each, um, polling site and are, you know, bringing back the results when the tapes are read at the end of the night. So, um, I think we're, I don't, I don't, Jens, I don't know if I want to say we're breaking news, but we're, we're pretty.
We have been, um, the last two.
Last two elections.
We have been, yeah.
And, and the interface at the high school has been with Katie Bilt Bowles, We The People team, um, which once again, one state competition is heading to, um, DC in, uh, early April, but I will say I just.
Still going to be around.
Well, yeah, they, they cut the funding to the Center for Civic Education, which runs the entire program across the country. So I don't know if there will be a competition next year, which is can't even wrap my head around it. So there, there's more to come on that hopefully, but, um, you know, Trumbull has been you know, at the top of the heap in Connecticut since 1989, since the first competition. And we have done really well at the, at the national level. Um, and I, I mean, so many of the students that have participated have gone on to teach, to be attorneys, to be, I mean, and have continued their engagement in how our country runs. I would, I would, and most, you know, we get so many alums that come back to help, uh, in after they, while they're in college, after they graduate, I mean, they all talk about the impact that the program has had on their lives, no matter what direction their career takes them. So, um, I'm really hoping that somehow this, the funding gets restored. Um, but we're trying to figure out exactly what's going on right now. The point being that they're the ones that, that produce, have been producing the show for election night because they're all into the constitution and how our government runs and all of that. So.
Right.
Right. Kate, um, just as a suggestion, I'm thinking as, you know, as you're explaining this, um, first of all, I think the election year could, is definitely content that we should think about promoting, obviously later on, once, you know, maybe September-ish, like around the school year, but I definitely think that that's something we should start promoting. And, um, obviously I hope that We The People continues, but I do think that I, maybe as a backup, that could be an opportunity for these students who would otherwise be interested, like to, just to help us create some content.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
They create, like Amanda, they are responsible. The way it's worked in the past is that TCTV has handled the technical end of the show and We The People has been responsible for the content. So they've been the talent, they've been everything in front of the camera and.
I watched them. I loved it.
They, and it's, it's all like, everything you see, that's all the information that you're watching is student presented. So, um, but this could be an opportunity to work with these students, like I said, just to create some more longer form content.
Yeah, to put the two together because We The People can, can, can create the content. AV club can help them get it on the air.
Right.
Get it on the air. Or, or make suggestions for other things that, kinds of content that people would be interested in, that We The People team tends to be focused on historical, explaining what the different, you know, elected positions are and what those jobs do. And so I think there's a great opportunity to expand the scope of our election programming.
Right. And I think even like in the past, we created some PSAs where the We The People students did a little, you know, recorded little interstitials about what each elected position in the town of Trumbull does. They've done them on non-municipal election years, like state election years, like this is what, you know, what is the AG do? What is the Secretary of State responsible for? So I think, again, it's mostly civic education. So I think there's a lot of opportunity there.
And get out the boat, right? Yep. Okay. All right. Anything else you guys want to talk about that we haven't touched on yet? Okay, our next meeting is April 10th. Is that before or after, uh, spring break, the week before?
Before break, there's a possibility that I may not be available. I might be in Dayton with, uh, winter percussion.
I don't know what we'll do.
Don't be jealous.
In Dayton? No, I won't be jealous.
It's great in Dayton, Kate, and you know, it's what they say there.
All right. Well, you'll give me, you know, your report if, if camp, but I do hope winter, I mean, I hope it's like, are they qua, is it some sort of qualification they have to get through?
It's actually the national championships.
Oh, cool. So are we definitely in or?
They, yeah, they'll, they'll go and compete. Um, and hopefully that'll be their semifinals day. So it's like, oh no, that's that's the qualify, I can't remember what they call it now, but it's like they compete Thursday. And if they score high enough, then they move on to semifinals on Friday. And then if they score high enough, they move on to the finals on Saturday.
Wow. Okay. Good luck.
Intense. Thank you. It's an intense, uh, intense ride. And then they, they start their competition season this Saturday. So we'll see how that goes.
Wow. Jeff, anything from the Board of Ed that we haven't talked about?
Um, the only, the only thing I love Laura went over and that we had the, you had the power issue in, in the server with the UPS. Jose and myself went in there and just kind of re-distributed everything and got it back up, but UPSes should be on the scope for, if, if it wasn't included with the server price.
I'm pretty sure that was on the list, right, Laura?
Pretty sure it is. Yes.
Two? I, I only remember one. Uh, maybe I'm wrong, but were there two? Cause you have one for each rack. Unless we get a UPS large enough to handle.
There's only one, only, um, my understanding is that only the one rack on the left is what, um, is what we're using. I don't know what's on the right hand rack. Those are older servers that are used.
The, the right hand rack had the, uh, it also had the internet router. It had the TV that you use to compare the, remember, because that was off and then we, we powered that whole right side up for you. I, I mean, if that's not necessary, uh, there's not a lot of draw out of those, but
Right.
There is stuff that you were using in that right rack.
So is that something we should get now, regardless? And, and are they expensive?
They're probably, I mean, around 1,200 for, for, uh, again, I would, we'd have to, I'd have to know the draw and everything in the UPS.
Okay, maybe you guys can discuss it because we might.
I'll, I'll look and see if I, I might have, even if we have like one that we refreshed, just to, just maybe to put the core components on it. If Laura, if you can identify them for me, and maybe we could see if we could at least kind of put a Band-Aid on it to get you going to, you know, so you do that. Just so, because what had happened is they were doing a, um, maintenance to the, um, to the, the main power supply in the building. So they shut it off for three hours and the three hours just killed everything in that room. So which probably means those UPSes weren't working to begin with. I mean, honestly, if it lost power and they never came back, once the power came back on, they were probably just floating anyway. So.
Okay, Laura, if you can follow up with Jeff on that and then get back to me, if that's something that we need to move on sooner rather than later, especially if Jeff doesn't have something available for us to use. If we need to buy it, then I got to figure out, you know, I think we've got the money, but it wasn't in our original plan, but I think I can squeeze it in. I just.
Right. I think, and I'll confirm if that was part of the, um, server upgrade.
I think, I think I saw UPS.
I remember a UPS, but I don't remember if that was for the control room or if that was for the server room.
I think it was.
Already replaced? The control room had, um, when the control room UPS was, um, replaced. And if I'm not mistaken, Kate, that was part of the server, I mean, at the server, the control room TLC that was covered with ARPA funds.
Yep.
And then, um, the quote that Donnie from DNR sent us, uh, which included the server upgrades should include a UPS. But Kate.
Yeah, new UPS rated for all servers. 2,200 on his list. Okay. So Laura, dig in and we'll, we'll figure it out.
Yes.
That'd just give us a little more security in the interim that, that would be good to be on top of.
Yes, agreed.
Yeah, because you don't, you don't want to have to go through what you went through last time, Laura. You were trying to scramble on to get everything back up and everything. And plus it's not really good for a server to just crash like that. So especially for on the edge as it is.
And it's probably also not good, you know, again, to have to scramble around and not be on a UPS, you know, just be powered in.
I'll, I'll see what I have. And then what I'll probably do, depending on your schedules, maybe have Peter Jose go over. So if you can identify the core components, you know, and so we can kind of establish what kind of draw those components have and see if the UPS will work for you. Like I said, just, just to get you through till you can figure something else out. So if, if we do have any kind of other power issues recovered. Cause I believe that room's on, on the generator. Cause that's what they shut off when the power went off. But so we just have something that's just to carry you over until that.
Kicks in.
Yep.
That would be great. Thank you.
Okay. Excellent. Jens, anything that, were you going to say something?
No, um, I'm also, I'm glad Amanda is on board.
Me too. Okay. Anything else anybody wants to talk about? Okay, then, um, I am going to call the meeting to close at eight forty-nine. A little earlier than anticipated. So I'm giving everybody 11 minutes back in their day. You're welcome. And we will see you guys in April.
Yep.
All right. See you later.
Bye.